Good evening. I would like to call to order the special meeting of the Newport New School Board for Tuesday, November the ninth, two thousand and twenty-one. On behalf of the members of the school board and the superintendent, I welcome each of you present and watching. The COVID- nineteen pandemic and now the Delta variant continue to affect how we conduct business. Personal barriers are installed between members of the board and our staff and visitors are masked and socially distanced in the auditorium and in our overflow areas. We are taking these steps to ensure the health and well-being of our staff and the public. We value and appreciate your partnership. We will begin tonight's meeting with the pledge. School board member, Ms. Amon, would you please lead us in the pledge? Thank you. Now that moves us on to item two. So during this special meeting, we provide time for the public to address the school board. The school board recognizes that during the pandemic, some members of the public may not be able to join us in person. As advertised, citizens may submit comments via a web form, email, or voicemail in thirty minutes prior to our meeting to be included in the official meeting record. For those of you joining us in person, the board considers this an opportunity to listen to your comments. Please understand that we will consider your concerns, but get back to you at a later time. We ask that you comply with our three-minute time limit. As you begin your comments, a green light will come on on that side of the dais. A yellow light signals that you have thirty seconds remaining, and a red light beep indicates that your time is up and we would ask you to wrap up your comments at that time. As your name is called, please come forward. I do have one card at this time. And the card is Mr. Michael Bartley.
Mr. Brown, members of the school board, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I think we can all agree that everything we do is to educate our children to the best of ability and everything else that's done here is just merely a mechanism to achieve that goal. And I'm an engineer and a lot of what we do is we use trends, find what trends make things better. One of the strongest trends that I know of for education is instructional time. And the more instructional time you have, the better educational outcomes you're probably going to have. And I find an email that starts off that we had unfinished student learning from the superintendent, and I agree with that. And then I see what they want to do about it. It's not add more instructional hours, it's to add less. And it seems like that's just a farce. Why are we restricting our educational time? And I wish it was a joke, but it's not. And I care about my kids' education. What happened last year is terrible, but it's over. And if we want to change the time for having a week off for fall break, that may make sense for next year. As long as we keep the time at the end of the schedule or get rid of other holidays, those are all reasonable things to do. I mean, I work, I gotta put in two weeks' notice before I take my vacations. You guys aren't even giving us that amount of time. I just wish that we would have more consideration in these sort of things and possibly add weeks on the end of the schedule if we're going to actually take off time right now. Because I want my kids to have the best education they possibly can have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Bartley. Do we have any, Madam Court, do we have any additional cards?
No, sir.
We have no additional cards and we will close our public comment portion and move on to item three, which is our action item. Dr. Parker, I believe you have a calendar update recommendation for us today.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. We bring before you this evening a calendar recommendation based on our communication with staff and our building-level leadership. Our calendar committee was convened to look at possible ways to improve teacher planning time over the course of this year based on what, on the needs of our staff as well as addressing the critical shortage of teachers and/or substitutes in our school division. The schedule before you this evening, we feel, will allow staff at the quality time for planning to improve in-class instruction when classes meet. Additionally, suggested days that are proposed in the calendar will align with nearby school divisions where our staff live, which would further compound problems if those folks were required to work them in those days as well. But we also are providing the needed wellness days for our staff. Mrs. Brooks will provide an overview of the calendar adjustments and the implications for meeting state requirements in terms of instructional hours. Mrs. Brooks?
Thank you, Dr. Parker. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Madam Chairman, members of the board, and again, Dr. Parker. This evening, I would like to propose adjustments to the current school year calendar for your consideration. Now, while this school year has started in a traditional way with students attending in-person five days a week, as weeks went by, the school year became very different from what we would consider as our norm. Because of this, our leadership team came together to look ahead to the second quarter and beyond to plan much-needed support for our students and staff. So why are these calendar adjustments needed? Many of our students are still facing the residual effects of school closures due to COVID- nineteen and our need of additional supports. In order to best meet the needs of students, our teachers require more planning time to develop effective lessons, classroom assessments, and remediation activities. Like many school divisions across the country, COVID- nineteen quarantine protocols have led to staffing shortages for substitute teachers in our classrooms, for bus drivers, our child nutrition services employees, and staff in other departments who are taking on additional duties to ensure that our students' needs are being met. So to address these challenges, we are proposing several adjustments to the current school year calendar that we believe will allow our staff to better serve our students and our families. The first adjustment we are proposing will be for Monday, November twenty-second and Tuesday, November twenty-third, which are currently designated as school days. They will become much-needed wellness days for all students and staff. In addition, Wednesday, November twenty-fourth, a planned half-day for twelve-month employees will become a holiday. As we enter two thousand and twenty-two, Monday, January fourteenth, will become a full virtual learning day for students with teacher professional development in the morning and planning time for teachers in the afternoon to prepare for end-of-the-semester supports for our students. In February, we are proposing to use Thursday, February third, and Friday, February fourth, for something new this year as midterm intervention days, which we are calling a winter reset for students who have been identified through assessments for structured remediation. Schools will have the flexibility of planning their support efforts. Only students who are identified for remediation will report to school on those days. Students who remain at home will be provided assignments or review work. On both days, students will have in-person learning in the morning and teacher planning time in the afternoon. In March, Wednesday, the sixteenth, will be a half-day dismissal for students with in-person instruction in the morning and independent learning for students and teacher professional development in the afternoon. In April, Friday, the first, will become a full virtual learning day for students with teacher professional development in the morning and planning time for teachers in the afternoon. Our last adjustment will be on Wednesday, April twentieth, which will be a half-day dismissal for students with in-person instruction in the morning and independent learning for students and teacher professional development in the afternoon. Now, the designated days are intended to provide teachers with additional time for planning lessons, for reviewing and developing assessments, for providing remediation to support students, and participating in professional development. The calendar changes that I shared will allow staff the time needed to address student learning loss due to COVID- nineteen protocols while continuing to exceed the requirements for instructional hours set by the Code of Virginia. And in determining the proposed calendar adjustments, we work to balance the instructional needs of students with the preparedness of teachers and staff. We realize that these changes will require our families to adjust their schedules, so our goal was to provide notification to our families as soon as possible so that they may plan accordingly. We hope our families will understand and support our efforts to meet the overall needs of our students and staff. I will leave you with this visual representation of the revised calendar, and we are asking for your approval of the calendar with the designated adjustments that I just shared with you this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brooks. At this time, can we have a motion to approve the action item, the item three point oh-one, school calendar update?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have a motion to approve the updated school calendar as presented.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Is there a second to the motion? Thank you, Mr. Ely. All right, now time for discussion and questions. I'm sure that some of you do have some questions or comments. Yes, Dr. Best?
I have comments. Thank you, Ms. Brooks. So, my comments. Sometimes the simplest things are the most complicated things, such as changes to the school calendar. So we know that teachers are working very, very hard. They're working, filling in for vacancies, for unfilled substitute positions, for, to accommodate maybe short staff, being short-staffed for resource classes, and just pretty much whatever that they're asked to do, and we commend them for that. For our parents, we know that parents are working hard to help their students as best they can. They really, I think, most parents appreciate even more the job that teachers have to do because for the last twenty months, it's been kind of unconventional as far as educating their children is concerned. And they realize that it takes a special kind of people and it takes a special skill set to be a good teacher. And so I think that is one of the things that this pandemic has brought to light as well. For children, we know that, and we knew it before the research said it, that children do better when they are in front of teachers. We knew that before because what teachers do is very, very important. And again, I said, it takes a special type of person, it takes a special kind of skill set. We also know that when students are out of school, that they have suffered academically, that they have suffered socially, and that they have suffered emotionally. And then you have staff such as bus drivers and other type of support staff people that are filling in in every facet, in every way that they can as well. When we take students out of school, again, parents have to get additional childcare and things like that, but also we have staff that are hourly employees, and hourly employees don't get paid when they don't work. But also, we have parents that are hourly employees, and when they have to take off to take care of their children, they don't get paid. And we have many parents that fall into this dilemma. And also, some of their pay is not very high, and they may make fifty, seventy-five dollars a day. Some people are very blessed and fifty or seventy-five dollars won't make a difference in their life, but for many people, that can change your life dramatically as far as food, as far as housing, as far as heat and air. So I'm saying all that to say that although it seems simple, and we truly appreciate you, Mrs. Brooks and Dr. Parker and staff, for coming up with ways, coming up with days that you think will address some of the needs of our students especially, and needs of our division. For me, for me right now, I would like to suggest, and I guess I'll have to make a motion, Mr. Chair, properly, and can I say what I'm gonna suggest?
Go ahead, yes.
So I would just like to suggest for right now, and this is simply all that I'm saying, is that we would vote as to the change for the November change in the school calendar. The other changes are for two thousand and twenty-two, and I'm going to make a motion that we possibly table that until possibly one of the next meetings just to let us just step back four minutes and just take a breather and look at it again. I'm not suggesting any other changes or anything like that just to vote on the November dates and just table the other changes. So I just wanted to share that. Thank you.
All right, so Dr. Best, you've made a motion. I understand you, and your motion is to table, you amended the main motion. You want to table changes, the recommended two thousand and twenty-two changes until a later time, and we would still bring forward the two thousand and twenty-one changes.
Correct.
Okay. All right. Is it okay? So a motion has been made to amend. Is there a second on that, on that motion to amend?
There was a second.
A second by Mr. Harris, all right? All right, so then we'll continue discussion on this amended motion, and that's what our vote will be on, that amendment, to pass the amendment, and then we'll go back to the main motion. All right, so any further discussion or questions, comments? Yes, Mr. Ely?
This is a comment. I definitely appreciate the staff for taking the opportunity to create this schedule. I do know, I have a lot of educators or friends, they're at the point where they're drained, they're tired, you know? They're trying to make, catch up from two years. I talked to one teacher yesterday. She said, "Mr. Ely, I haven't had no time after work with my little kids and my family, neither on the weekend because I'm doing professional development, I'm trying to catch up, and it feels like I'm losing myself." She said, "I love Newport News, I love teaching, but I'm afraid I'm gonna have to find another profession because I'm losing my family." So when teachers tell me stuff like that, it makes me feel like, wow. You know, I just broke in the crowd, like, this is, this is just terrible times to me. And she said, "We're playing catch-up." She said, "I'm a third-grade teacher and I'm teaching kids who can't read and write." She said, "I'm a strong teacher. I'm a teacher for twenty years." But she said, "This is the hardest it's ever been." She said, "I'm not looking for an easy way out. I just want some time so I can take care of my family, my well-being, my health." So I feel if we don't take care of our staff, their well-being, their health, we might not have any teachers 'cause, like the teacher told me, how many other teachers are feeling the same way, where they're looking for another profession? Teachers are smart. They're smart individuals. So it's not like they can't get a job somewhere else. So I feel like if we don't listen to what our teachers are saying, our staff is saying. We all get the emails. We may want to come up with all these rules that teachers may not need days off or... Well, we might not have any teachers if we don't listen to teachers. And it's not just a Newport News issue. It's not a Hampton issue. This is an issue all across Virginia, all across the United States. Just even talking about teachers, she teaches Fairfax County, strong teacher. She's tired. She said, "My husband make a hundred and eighty thousand dollars a year. I ain't coming back next year." She's drained. So I feel like we need to listen to our teachers. We need to... Mental health is very important, and we, something we can't take lightly of teachers and our children. So I feel like even with our children coming back, they're coming back, it's not the norm for them. You got kids that went virtual two years now in school, third graders. So we just have to look at the whole process of it. It's a time where the days that children are home, they get the extra care they can, they get their self-wellness. So I'm definitely in support of the new schedule. And I do understand what Dr. Best said, maybe even, you know, looking at two thousand and twenty-two, but I definitely think the days that we have in place to give teachers and staff and children a break are definitely needed because if we don't look at those extra mental health days, two thousand and twenty-two, we may be less teachers, less special jobs than we already have. Thank you.
Yeah, so other, yes, Mr. Hunter?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I really don't speak a whole lot lately, but in this one, I will. Your, our, the staff has put a lot of time in this calendar.
Right.
We discussed that before, that if we go back and only approve this, that means that's another meeting that we have to come back again, and I'm exhausted. I'm exhausted. So if we're exhausted, the teachers have to be exhausted. If the teachers are exhausted, we know administration are exhausted. And so we're going to just approve, just this month, the gentleman was just saying that he needs more than two weeks to plan for vacation. We're giving the calendar for the remaining of the year so that our, so our parents can plan. This is hard work. It's not gonna get any, it's not gonna get any better. We want to take time again from our staff to go back and review calendars again. They've taken this calendar and they've looked at it in the entirety for a whole entire calendar year. This is how we plan. We don't typically plan month at a time or two months at a time. We plan for a whole year. This is important. We hear it. And it's not just us. They're paying three hundred percent pay for flight attendants to work from, sorry, Monday until the end of the year. I mean, I work at the university. We're short everywhere. It is hard to get them, and we need to show that we have confidence, not only in our staff, but in our teachers, that we can put a plan together not to go back wishy-washy and come back again and change the plan for just too much from now. That's not good board policy. It's not good board policy. It's not good board policy. And I'm saying this, we must be, together, we must listen to our teachers. I'm telling, I have educators in my family, they're exhausted. I'm exhausted. I'm exhausted. We have to take this calendar, either approve it or don't approve it. But I don't want to come back here to look at another calendar too much from now or much from now. I think we're doing a disservice to those who put all this time in, their work, that they would have to do something else away from advancing kids just because we, this board, just want to go back in this month. If it's not next month, someone's not gonna like something for the following month. And we'll be here every month or every other month changing the calendar. That's not our role. That is not our role. Our, don't, don't, don't complicate this. This is already complicated. We're already exhausted. I'm listening to the parents out there. I hear you. I do hear you. I understand that, you know, people, it's tough, but let's get a calendar that we've presented to us so that those parents who need to take off or maybe they can find arrangement a month or two months lead down the road that they can plan for this, that they can plan for it. Not for us to come back in December and say, no, we're gonna scratch that day, or no, we're gonna scratch that day, because a lot of folks have to put in time a month ahead of time. So I beg you, I beg us, absolutely beg us, to accept the calendar that's put forth to us and so we, our teachers and our administrators can get back to doing what they're supposed to do is ensuring that students get the best education they can. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Hunter. Okay, Ms. Amon, I believe you're ready.
Thank you. I thank you everybody for working hard on the schedule. As we've heard this evening, and to your point, Dr. Best, you know, students learn best when they're in school and get in-person instruction. And I've heard, I've been on the phone and emails with parents and families all day today and some days prior, and there is strong concern with the proposed changes that, A, parents may not have the time to make the necessary changes for the upcoming two off days, depending on the notice they have to put in, and/or some have had students, children, quarantined once or twice. They may be up against a, we, I don't have any more paid time off, and that may make a big difference. And we're coming to the end of the year, and a lot of those, you know, some of their benefits may be, you know, January to December, so we're kind of getting in the crunch time as far as they're concerned. And I know there are also some who students have been home, and any time they can get in-school learning is huge. I also know teachers are beyond exhausted. And I think we've gotten some really good suggestions, and we're doing some good things, some things creative with central office staff stepping in, maybe be substitute, getting some of the CNU students. And I would encourage us, regardless of days off, to keep those types of things, the extra professional development, the extra meetings. You read some of the comments we've gotten as far as when teachers have planning periods, the meetings those are filled up with, how much they actually can plan versus having to do it at home. I would encourage us to look at pushing as much as is not a hundred percent essential. Maybe to the summer, maybe we have some pandemic funds. Maybe we can look at if teachers or staff want to do some of this extra professional development in the summer or additional time when we're not in the center of the year focusing on getting these kids back up to speed. Maybe we can do some extra, you know, incentive payments or if it's above and beyond their contracted time. But I think we've all talked about how, you know, focusing on the essentials and seeing how we can, you know, bring some of the students that have fallen behind up to where they need to be just to even learn what they need to learn this year or maybe what they needed to learn next year. I'm very concerned at taking extra days off. I'm concerned it's sort of a Band-Aid versa. If we can look at some more ideas to alleviate the just systemic week-after-week demands on our teachers, that may go even further. So what I've been hearing from family members and students is more that maybe look at some of these more systemic, ongoing changes versus the kids learn best when they're in school or looking at two more days off. And to the point of the extra, the additional changes, if we do go back to revisit it and review it, I was just noticing we had, it seems that we're putting in for more possibly half-days, and I know that's a big strain on transportation, some additional remote learning days. So to the extent we did anything, I would encourage us to try to not make as much back-and-forth transportation, but either in-person or not in-person. But I think for the kids that are behind and for the families that don't have options, this is a really tight turnaround for Thanksgiving, and that's five days without the two days. So what I've, the feedback I've been getting is more of a concern about it. There are other things we could do that might even be more impactful to alleviate the stress and make this a great place to come back to next year for staff retention.
Thank you, Ms. Amon.
Yes, a small comment. I guess the good thing about this is, you know, my esteemed colleague to the right only made a suggestion, which was my first time hearing it. You know, here's some discussions about, you know, maybe, you know, changing a schedule or whatever the case may be. But, you know, the good thing, we haven't took a vote on it. And so, you know, we go through a process like this, which is great because it's sometimes always best to get alternative suggestions. And especially in this area, and I say this only because she's my colleague, Dr. Best, you know, I think has probably the most experience on this board when it comes to teaching, scheduling, and things of this nature. And so thank you for the suggestion, you know, whether it passes or don't pass. I think it only does the board good to hear suggestions like this, and so I appreciate that. And the bottom line is, you know, as a leader, you can't take care of no one unless you take care of yourself. You know, there's a myth that goes, that have always circulated in the leadership sphere that, you know, twenty-five hours a day, seven days a week, you know, be as a leader, I'm doing my job. No, you're not. In all actuality, you're harming the unit or whatever the case may be that you lead. So you have to be to take care of yourself first in order for you to take care of someone else. Now, there's a lot of smart people in this division, and I'm not one of them when it comes to things like this right here. But what I do know is, is that once you go down the road of a culture, and cultures are normally created, you know, very easily, slowly. Once a culture develops, and I see one developing, and I say publicly that people are stressed out, you know, that's, you know, stress, it crosses all genres. People are stressed out, and sometimes we have to make decisions to try to get ahead of something or play catch-up. I don't get phone calls about... Um, I don't get phone calls about things like this. But the last month, I've gotten a lot of phone calls, a lot of emails. People may call me and complain about, you know, s- something. But it's never been about, you know, a culture of, of, of a place. It's never been that. I've been on this board since 2016. And so whether we have our finger on the pulse that leaders, instructors, administrations somehow, some way, whether it's phased in, whether it's done all at the same time, which is probably not a good thing. But somehow we need to relieve some stress and pressure. And I know that's gonna sometimes apply that to families and children, which is where the, the, the tough decisions come in. So how do we do that? You know, and, and I think that's why, you know, we have a superintendent to figure that out. And I hope there are people in the administration that is giving them alternat- him alternative answers. And I hope Dr. Parker is listening to the administration, whether there's answers that, that doesn't sound right or doesn't fit his philosophy, maybe. But in order for us to overcome this, we are gonna have to sit down and make some tough decisions. And everyone's voice is gonna have to be here, everyone. So, uh, Mr. Chairman, I, you know, I just want to say that. And, and I don't get ruffled around the feathers about too much because, you know, things come and things go like fags. But a culture can do the most damage that's unseen because people begin to act on the way they feel. And people don't remember how you made them feel, uh, you know, whether it's the day or twenty years ago. Okay? So whatever we do, um, and, and Mr. Garrett, thank you for your passionate, uh, you know, statements. Because you've always been a passionate person. I've learned a lot from you in the board. And, and I think that keeps us on our toes and keeps us motivated. Uh, so, but I always follow the will of the board, whatever that may be. And Mr. Chairman, I think had an opportunity either, uh, to table that, that motion, which he could have by Robert Russo order if he wanted to, okay? But he chose to let it go forward. So whether somebody didn't second it or whatever. So that was my, uh, position on seconding so that, 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 that this conversation could be had, you know, or voted up or down today. So, you know, just want to appreciate all the hard work that you all do because I know it's not tough. I mean, I know it's not easy. Um, but I just want to make sure that leaders are taking those suggestions from sometime people that may not align with your views, whether it's the teacher making suggestions to the principal, principals up to the administration, or whether it's the janitor, uh, you know, making a suggestion to our clerk, okay? People have great ideas out there, all right? And they always don't come from, you know, us that, you know, that sit here at the diocese. They always don't come from the administration. Sometimes they come from just the, you know, the person that's probably had some experience somewhere in their life about stress, stress management and things of this nature. And all the answers are within this division. They're not contracted out of somewhere where somebody come in and go, "Hey, I think you need to do this." I think, I think we have the answers right here in the division, okay? And, and, you know, this is one of these stress points in, 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 in a, in a community or whatever the case may be. But we can be successful as long as we are effectively communicating with one and another. All right? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. All right, Madam Vice Chair.
All right. I think I'm pulling up the rear here. Um, I want to thank Dr. Parker and his team, you know, for thoughtfully presenting adjustments to this year's school calendar. Um, we all feel the stress and we all feel, um, the pressure of, of what we've been going through. And, um, like Ms. Amon, Ms. Amon, um, I have really heard a lot from the community on this issue. I've heard a lot from teachers who really are at their wits' end. And it's not because they just want a break. They want the opportunity to do what's best for their students, have time to plan and assess, have time to sit in groups with other teachers and talk about best practices and what they're seeing in their classroom to perhaps help another student in another classroom. So I don't want it to come off as though they're just so throwing their hands up and just want to go home and put their feet up. It really is because they are continuing to want to do what's best for their students. That being said, um, you do have to take care of yourself to do that. And we have to look at whether it's, um, you know, quality versus quantity. And yes, we know contact hours are important. But each and every one of us knows too, if you're not at your best, if you've pulled an all-nighter, the last part of your work is not, in fact, you might spend time having to do it over. Uh, and we don't want that circumstance for our students either. We don't want them to have to watch wellness be put on the table and off to the side. Because the time is going to come when they feel the same pressure that they're seeing their teachers and their parents go through. And so we need to make sure we are modeling wellness, you know, for, for our students as well. Um, I am eager to learn the benefits of the winter reset. I'm very excited about that. Um, it seems to have some very promising, uh, opportunities for both students and for, for teachers as well. The challenging and the frustrating part of this is, as, um, Mr. Harris said, somebody has to absorb the change. And I know that that's going to ultimately be on our families and on those who need to be able to work and cannot, to Dr. Best's point. Um, so that, that makes this what seems like a simple decision challenging. But I think the important thing that we're all displaying here is that this, these decisions were not made lightly. They were with great consideration. Um, are they going to be a one-size-fits-all? Um, absolutely not. But at the same time, we're doing exactly what our speaker implores us to do. And that is to do what's best for our students. And this is an important step towards that end. Um, so I, the last thing I want to say, um, is that I have really enjoyed serving with this board. Um, I enjoy the dialogue that we have because we look at the same issue from so many different lenses. And this one, bar none, has been in that exact same position. And what we have found is that on each of us on the board, different people contact us, um, in terms of what their concerns are. And for us to be able to dialogue like this and share what those interactions have been makes us that stronger and it makes, um, what we need to vote on, uh, that much more specific. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the opportunity.
Well, uh, we're going to proceed with the, uh, we're now going to proceed with the vote on the amended motion. And then there'll be time for further comment on the main motion if that, uh, depending on how that, uh, on how that, that turns out. So I just want to remind everyone that right now we're voting on the amended motion. The, the amendment to the motion would be to, uh, defer all changes, you know, all 2022 changes, uh, to the school calendar update as presented by the superintendent, his recommendation. That's the amended motion that we're getting ready to vote on. And I'll just make my own, um, comment about the amendment to the motion is that, um, you know, like, as, as we all said, we've heard from a lot of, uh, people, heard from the public and heard from, uh, from staff and from teachers. And, uh, um, what I think, in my personal opinion, that the division needs, es- especially from this board right now, is stability. Uh, and I, so I do think that, uh, having, uh, having, uh, only a few months of a calendar as opposed to being able to pass a full calendar, uh, presents, uh, as, as Mr. Harris was talking about, a culture of, uh, uh, would present a culture of instability for, um, the public and our, our teachers and staff. It's very important, as we've, as we know, we've all heard, uh, people do want to be able to plan ahead. They do want to be able to look at a calendar and see where everything is. And that's what the superintendent did actually sharpen pencil, uh, before he came to the board. And we all had a chance to hear his, uh, uh, his recommendation, uh, prior to tonight. Um, he really did go out and sharpened the pencil. The calendar committee went out and did, uh, research and work to look at, okay, let's look at the entire year and let's make sure that we've captured all of the days that we'd possibly try to, you know, have additional adjustments. And, uh, let's maximize, you know, so that an optimization was done on the calendar that was presented to us tonight to, within the state requirements, give us the best calendar going forward that was going to provide for. We've talked about letters, making sure that we get the letters training done, making sure that we can catch, uh, students up who have, um, fallen behind during COVID learning. Uh, so all of that care and effort has gone into this full calendar. And I, and I do just personally believe that if the full, if we can't do a full calendar night, it, it is, will reflect, um, negatively on the board that we can't provide that stability to the public in that way. Uh, so that's my personal opinion. But with that, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll? So a vote in favor would be a vote for the, uh, for the delay and to, to pass a half, half of a calendar. A vote against would be, uh, against the adjustment. And then we'd go back to the main motion if the, if this motion pat, you know, if, if this motion failed, we'd go back to the main motion.
Mr. Chairman, may I state the motion?
Yes, please.
For clarity?
Mm-hmm.
So I have to vote on the November dates on the calendar and table other dates in 2022 on the proposed school calendar.
That's correct.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
All right. And I have a, a motion by Ms. Dr. Best and seconded by Mr. Harris. Surleslaw?
Against.
Mrs. Amon?
Against.
Dr. Best?
For.
Mr. Ely?
Against.
Mr. Harris?
Against.
Mr. Hunter?
Against.
Mr. Brown?
Against.
Motion fails six-one.
Okay. So at this time, then now we're back to the main motion. And I will open it back up again. I believe some folks wanted to make some additional comments. Dr. Best, if you want to make an additional comment.
Yes, I just wanted to have some clarification. Um, so we walk away, the record will reflect. There is no tired like teacher tired. So I don't want anyone to walk away thinking that in any form or fashion have, uh, negated or downplayed that the tiredness of teachers. Because sometimes the, the message gets lost in the translation. So I wanted to make sure that that was clear. I also didn't ask for a change in the calendar. I asked that we just voted for, for November. So I did not ask for a change in the calendar. I want the record to reflect that as well. And then number three, um, in response to, uh, Mr. Hunter, I was not asking for any extra meetings, um, as well. We meet next week and we also meet December. So I was not requesting any extra meetings. I just want the record to reflect those things. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Dr. Best. Any other further questions or comments, further discussion?
Uh, yes, I have one, Mr.
Okay, Mr. Harris, yes.
Um, and I think this may be the most I've spoken this month. Uh, the bottom, the, 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 the bottom line is, is I want to ensure that the culture is geared toward, uh, leaders and everyone taking care of themselves, okay? I only speak like this because of, yes, I, I, I fo- fall back on a lot of military service and I still see the effects, even after being retired fifteen years ago, of, of people that, leaders that did not take care of themselves, young soldiers that didn't take care of themselves, and people committing a lot of suicide. You know, something I live with on a daily basis, either knowing someone, have known someone, uh, or individuals that still struggle with stress. Whenever you think that you are doing enough for stress, you're not doing enough. You, the environment has to be, allow for people to express themselves, not disrespectfully, but to express themselves. Because once that happened, then the culture begins to change. And when the cultures change, you don't get as tired as often. And, and thank God for our teachers, but, you know, they, they can go that extra or second mile. Okay? It, this organization is no different from any other organization. That's no different. You know, we, 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 we take our most precious commodity, which is our youth, okay? So it is just as important, if not more important, than the environment I've been in all my life. But what I do know, if you do not take care of yourself or not allowed to take care of yourself, it only gonna harm the kids. I don't speak on this often, but I've received a lot of phone calls, Mr. Chairman, about this. I'm not as vocal as much, but I've been in an arena where this become, it's not a problem. Just let, let's, let's keep moving, let's keep moving, let's keep moving, let's keep moving. And all of a sudden, we look back and go, "What happened?" You know, "Where did the wheel fall off at?" Okay? So I don't know how it's gonna be done, whether, you know, I guess it starts with actually being honest with the communication. Yeah, I feel bad. I don't feel good today, you know? I'm not, I'm not feeling up to it, uh, whatever the case may be. Uh, you know, do we have resources to, I guess, increase our, what do you call it? Support teacher bank or whatever the case may be? You know, are, are, are we going out using the programs such as, uh, 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 Truth to Teachers, you know, where we have a plethora of young folks, you know, on Langley and the Navy and the Army, you know, that's looking for a job probably. You know, those folks can be converted to teachers just as easy because they know how to deal with stress. So, you know, I just want to make sure that we are putting the best foot forward and making sure we create an environment that is a successful one. Everybody's not going to be pleased, which is not a problem. But I think when people understand, right? The old saying in the army is, "You can be hard as long as you're fair." People will accept that. People will, you know, pick up their mantle and they will go execute. So I just want to make sure that we, we're monitoring our climate and we're making sure that, you know, we creating a place where, and it starts at this board, uh, creating a place, uh, that, you know, keeps people motivated and, and, and things of that nature. And, and that's all I have to say on that.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Any further comments? All right. Uh, there be no further, um, comments, uh, or discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll on the main motion, which is the superintendent's recommended adjustment to the 2021-2022 school calendar?
Surleslaw?
For.
Ms. Amon?
Against.
Dr. Best?
For.
Mr. Ely?
For.
Mr. Harris?
For.
Mr. Hunter?
For.
Mr. Brown?
For.
Motion carries six-one.
All right. I want to thank the board, um, for the time and effort that I know that we all have, um, put into this. And, and I recognize that we are all, uh, uh, stressed as, as we, as we, uh, and so the public should know that, you know, uh, we're, we're stressed as well. Uh, uh, but hopefully the public got to see tonight that, um, we definitely, uh, that the board very, very much cares, uh, and, and very, did not enter into this decision lightly. Uh, this was not a trivial decision for us. And we tried to make sure that we got the information to you as quickly as possible, which is why we called a special meeting, um, as early as we possibly could. All right. So with that, we have no further business. We stand adjourned.